I call the meeting order. Will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Here.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. Seeing none?
You're sure?
I think I...did I give enough time?
I don't know.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening, good evening.
How's it going?
It's going well.
It's been a month since we've seen each other.
It has.
It has, yes.
Short one for that fact.
It does seem that way, doesn't it?
Too fast.
Absolutely. Anything we need to talk about committee-wise, or has anybody been anywhere, Mr. Shonar?
No, I have not been anywhere.
All right.
No, it's been a quiet summer.
It has, actually, for the most part.
Hey, Tom.
Okay.
It has been a quiet summer.
Yes, which is good.
Which is good.
All right. So, this evening, we have Mr. Kinney here, and he is going to give us two presentations. And the first one, apparently, is harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So, good evening.
Good evening. And welcome back to another year of going over the HIV grades. So, as part of the 2011 Anti-Bullying Bill Rights Act, part of what we have to do as a district is to submit to the board our HIV grades for each particular building, present them to you, and also post them on the website. So, tonight, we are going over the 2016-17 grades. So, come September of this year, the school climate teams will sit down and do a self-assessment of the 17-18 school year, so it kind of works a year behind. So, I'm just trying to figure out how to get that one up. Does that...
Exit.
I wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, exit.
Would that exit?
Oh.
Yeah, no, that exit.
Health is on the way.
Yeah.
Hit escape for fullscreen.
There you go.
There you go.
It just disappears.
Oh, we need to move it over.
You'd be a little more patient.
So, again, each school has a school safety team, school climate team, both teachers, parents, along with administrators, required to complete a self-assessment, 26 what are called criteria reference points that they have to answer, and grade themselves on a scale of zero to three. Zero means you did not do anything to meet that particular standard, three meaning you exceeded that, one meaning partially met, two meaning you met the standard. So, as you'll see, you'll go through and see how we met each particular category. The scores are then submitted at the end of the self-assessment period, which for us will be probably the end of September that we'll submit the scores for this past school year, 17-18.
And then the state comes back and they release their grades. So, they did release them to us in May, but we had quite a few different things in June and July and whatnot, so that's why we're presenting them right now. So, I gave a breakdown of 15-16 to 16-17 and a comparison thereof. So, what it does is, again, these are the particular categories that they're self-assessing themselves on. Now, the state will take a look at our self-assessment grades, and particularly when I input my criteria that I have to do on my end as the anti-bullying coordinator, where I input the programs, the initiatives that we did on my end, collectively, they kind of compare the two, the self-assessment from the school safety, school climate team, to my report that I do, then they come up with a grade for each school. So, for the high school, it's pretty similar. As we work down here, some improved, some went down a point. Depending upon particulars, some of which could be out of our control, whether or not there was a delay in the time that we could complete a report, so an investigation, because of other information that we were waiting on, could affect the school-level incident reporting grade. So, most of them at the high school stayed the same, and I gave you a comparison out of, and again, 78 points, think about it, 78 points is getting a three on every single category.
Right.
Which means that you're exceeding. So, the state does not expect you to exceed in every single category. And to be quite honest, those districts that say that they exceed in every single category, to me, aren't critically looking at themselves correctly. In the middle school, the middle school stays high. They do a lot of different programming, not only with the character education classes, but would also bring in presenters. Ms. Loda does a wonderful job doing night events, screenagers, and a bunch of different types of programs for the kids and parents. So, they do stay high in the approaches and initiatives, as well as all the other categories. As you can see, they almost max out in every category, and they stay relatively high with the 76 out of 78, which is comparative like a 98 percent on a test. North End did go up this year. We were very happy with that as far as comparison for 15-16. And looking at that, you could see that they've maxed out in a lot of different categories, where they've actually exceeded a lot of different particular categories, and they made a real nice jump, about six points total in their score. And South End the same, made a nice jump of four points. And again, they are working on certain initiatives as well over at South End, and I do see those scores rising in the 17-18 school year because of some of the things that we did in this past school year as well. Couple of improvement initiatives we're working on that should take effect for 17-18. Obviously, you've seen the respect videos, Panther praise, peer leaders at the middle school. We retrain every year, the school climate team and our ABS, Anti-Bullying Specialist, through NJAPS or Legal One. We keep continuously updating our HIV webpage. We use Safe Schools for our personnel to train on HIV, cyberbullying. And we are utilizing, this upcoming school year, new HIV reporting forms created by Strauss SMA. Back in April, was it April? I think it was April, May, myself and Mr. Featherman attended a Strauss SMA workshop where they gave us the templates to follow. And obviously, you know Strauss SMA, for those of you that don't, it's our board policymakers, so they investigate and look at state statute and kind of comparatively come up with a best practice form that we'll be using this coming school year. I did also want to talk to you tonight about switching gears. Were there any questions on the HIV grades? No?
No.
We are also looking to put in some social-emotional support initiatives this coming school year. I think it's very important to highlight that because we're finding more and more kids that are struggling emotionally and socially, and as I like to say, they're not readily available to learn. So, you could have a student sitting in a classroom for 12 hours a day. If they're dealing something socially and emotionally that's really affecting them, it does not matter. They sound like Charlie Brown...you sound like Charlie Brown's teacher, whether it's school anxiety, whether it's dealing with, you know, social conflict coping skills. So, in addition to our guidance counselors, our SAC, our social worker, our school psychologist, doing many different groups and working with individual kids, we are also going to start a couple of other initiatives, one of them being what's called the Silas Program. And I do have a little clip, but essentially, we are piloting this program. We have 10 licenses, and we'll be utilizing it in the middle school as a pilot program for particular students that are identified for the need of this particular emotional and social support or work. But I just wanted to go ahead and play a little clip for you. I don't know if...is this going to play through the... What's that?
Like, if you had trouble making friends, you basically go on the computer and you give this, like, person, and then you have a background, and there's different kinds of backgrounds.
My favorite thing is the program.
You use a controller, control character, and the talking's on microphone.
And you have to talk to your friends while you're doing it, and you get to act out.
They have all these kinds of situations, and when they situate, and when you do these situations, and they absolutely happen, Silas can help you prac...can help you practice so if that even happens in the future, you can practice what you've learned in that.
It's like, it's like learning something new while having fun at the same time.
If you have a problem with bullying or something like that, you can practice it with your friends, who also can also practice it, and it can help you in the future when it actually happens to you.
You can develop a new skill every time you do it.
I learned when I did Silas was doing, like, bullying, saying no, and other stuff.
I learned how to play with friends.
It can be two players, three players, four players, it has a bunch of different curriculums, and there's lots of different things to learn about it.
That was great.
So, you saw a little bit of a snippet of the program. Basically, it is a game format that they use controllers. There's avatars that they get to select, and there are lesson plans associated for different scenarios. A guidance counselor could either run through the lesson plans and have the kids create a certain scenario that they may be experiencing right then and there. They don't have to do the whole, you know, gamut of curriculum. If they have two kids that are experiencing conflict with each other, say, in a cafeteria, they could set up a scenario and have them kind of act it out and role-play it so that they gain those skill sets of how to go ahead and, you know, facilitate conflict resolution. So, again, it is a pilot-type program. There's 10 licenses, and the nice thing about that is it's not...you don't have to designate 10 specific individuals. So, if you have two individuals that are working on a particular thing and they're ready to move on, they jump off. You can bring in another two individuals for those two licenses. Also, we're utilizing grant funds to contract a licensed clinical social worker this year. There's a certain amount of hours that we're going to have them come in and work on counseling one-on-one with students, again, who are not emotionally readily available to learn. They'll also be helping our guidance counselors, our SAC, build up their programming while also helping with risk assessments. We do have a couple of kids that every now and then that we need to make sure that they're, you know, on board psychologically to stay in school, and we need some help, maybe assessing whether or not they need more help. This person will also be a part of that, and we are planning on doing a needs assessment. So, as a district, we'll be pushing out to parents and to staff a needs assessment to analyze what particular things the social worker can also...the clinical social worker can also push out there as well and help us develop. So, those are just a couple of other things that we're adding to our arsenal to help the social-emotional components of our students. Any questions on that? All right, thank you very much.
That's great.
Great.
Thank you. All right, moving on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B5? So moved.
Second.
Can I also have the lights so perfect? Thank you. B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of July 24th. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers through the month of July. B3 is a motion to approve the treasures report for the month of June. B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary report for June. And B5 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrages and expenditures. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B6?
So moved.
Second.
B6, a motion to pay the listed bills that were in our packet. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for...that's a lot of pages for one...for B7 through B12?
So moved.
Second. B7 is a motion to approve the student transportation services for the fall athletic season, and that takes us a couple of pages. B8 is a motion to approve the second quarter unemployment assurance for the amount listed. B9 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Fernando Ferrero Photographer. B10 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Cause and Effect Productions, Inc. B11 is a motion to approve an equipment lease with American Capital, and B12 is a motion to retroactively approve Paul Davis Restoration. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under personnel, there's a lot of stuff going on. Can I have a motion for S1 through S27? And just so you know, there's two S27s, there's one under curriculum.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, it does happen. But for now, S1 through S27. So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from July 24th. S2 is a motion to approve Diana Sandoval, Cedar Grove High School Spanish teacher, for the amount listed. S3 is a motion to approve Cassandra Castro, MMS maternity leave replacement English teacher. S4 is a motion to approve Melinda Milano, a South End Grade 1 teacher. S5 is a motion to approve Christina Alseth, a South End Grade 4 teacher. S6 is a motion to approve Jennifer Burden, South End maternity leave replacement resource teacher. S7 is a motion to retroactively approve Ryan Pagano, district building and grounds custodian. S8 is a motion to retroactively approve Sean Kircherson, summer music program personnel. S9 is a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Barbieri, MMS choir and general music teacher. S10 is a motion to approve Christopher Kinney as the ESEA Title I Coordinator. S11 is a motion to approve Denise Geddis for supplemental instruction. S12 is a motion to approve the longevity revision for Linda Madio. S13 is a motion to rescind Rosemary DeRose, full-time lunch aid, and approve as a substitute lunch aid. S14 is a motion to approve the following substitute teachers for the 18-19 school year at the per diem listed. S15 is a motion to approve the following substitute nurses for the 18-19 school year. S16 is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. S17 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers. S18 is a motion to reimburse David Mullen, summer help custodian. S19 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S20 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. S21 is a motion to approve the following stipend positions according to the new agreement for the 18-19 school year for the South End advisors, school advisors. S22 is a motion to approve the following stipend positions according to the new agreement for the 18-19 school year for the high school advisors. S23 is a motion to approve the statement of assurance for the comprehensive equity plan for the 18-19 school year. S24 is a motion to approve Marie Crissulo, I apologize, to the position of transportation liaison. S25 is a motion to approve Teresa Lombardi to the position of substitute caller. S26 is a motion to approve Carmela Baraccio, North End school paraprofessional. And S27 is a motion to accept the resignation of Joan Puzzo Buckhard, North End lunch aid. Any discussion?
No. I don't remember half of them.
The only thing I want to say is welcome to the new people that are coming.
Yes.
And we're sorry to see some of the people who are leaving, well, all the people we're sorry that they're leaving, not some. And S14, it's interesting to see some names that we thought had retired, and S15 also, and they just couldn't stay away. So, that's great that they'll be joining us on a part-time basis occasionally. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under curriculum, we're going to replace S27 with S28, and I have a motion for S28.
So moved.
Second.
S28 is a motion to approve the following curriculum that has been newly written for implementing...implementation during the 18-19 school year. I just want to say robotics, Grade 11-12, that's fantastic, by the way.
It's exciting.
Any discussion?
It's very exciting.
It's very exciting.
Yeah.
And actually, Mr. Mangili tweeted some information about it just the other day, which was very exciting, so... Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under policies, I get to stop talking for a while. You get to talk for a long time.
You get to talk.
Couple minutes? It's a little take.
There's a lot of policies.
Not back here.
Well, our policy committee met this summer, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. The policy committee has undergone some changes, and each committee group does things a slightly different way, and so I think Mr. Shonar and Mrs. DeChiaro and I have found our way. So, thank you for that. So, we did do quite a bit of work, and we would like to walk you through these changes relatively quickly. So, the policy in REG 7440, school district security, I'm not going to read it all to you, but the crux of it is that I am now tasked with designating our school safety specialist, and there he is. He's sitting right there. Mr. Kinney wears it like a badge of honor. He attended the Required School Safety Specialist Academy early in August, and he's now certified or certifiable. So, we thank you for that. Policy in REG 7441, electronic surveillance in school buildings and on school grounds. As you know, a few months ago, we talked about this memorandum of understanding that we developed with our Cedar Grove Police Department. The board played an active role in helping develop that MOU. It's in play as our referendum plans unfold and we gain potentially more surveillance equipment. It really puts us in a great position to fortify our buildings and secure our kids and our staff. 8630, bus driver, bus aide, and emergency bus procedures. We don't own our own buses, but we do have bus routes, as you know, and so the folks that we contract with, they are certified in these required areas. Some of the areas include safety, of course, interacting with students with special needs, bus inspections, emergency protocols, et cetera. It's all listed in these policy in REGs. Check them out. 9242, use of electronic signatures. Those of you that have children in the district, the portal was recently opened, and you were asked to electronically signature, if you will, certain forms before you gained access to your child's schedules. So, you know what this is about. This is certainly a legitimate way of communicating with our parents at home, as this is kind of what we do these days. 1550, equal employment, anti-discrimination practices. The Office of Civil Rights made some recommendations, and Strauss SMA, our policy provider, certainly charts those recommendations and passes them along to school districts, so we are going to adopt these important recommendations into our regulation guide. What are they? It regards the complainant and the procedures for reporting and us processing any affirmative action complaints. 2431, athletic competitions and Regulation 2431.2, medical examinations, et cetera. We are in compliance already, but these are the things. We are requiring an opioid use and misuse education fact sheet, and we also...the opioid, along with that, I'm sorry, is the cardiac information as well. So, those of you that have children, student athletes, you're well aware of these procedures as well. We appreciate you signing those and bringing them on to us before your child participates. 2431.8, varsity letters for interscholastic extracurricular activities. Interesting language in here where now we're...they've broadened the definition of what qualifies as a varsity activity. And so, while we haven't had any new activities brought to me, and subsequently to the board, to consider for a varsity letter, we would certainly look forward to adopting this mandated policy, and we look forward to hearing from our stakeholders. Perhaps there are activities out there that kids, advisors believe fulfill this...these criteria. Policy in REG 5350, student suicide prevention, and Policy 8462, reporting potentially missing or abused children. Some heavy-duty stuff here, but again, Strauss SMA makes sure that we're keeping pace with the changes that occur at the state level. Different agencies are required to be notified should there be either of these two scenarios, and so we will follow as required. Student smoking. Want to point out one highlighted change here. Moving forward for this 17-18 school year, rather, it's 18-19 school year, isn't it? If a student is caught smoking, vaping, an electronic cigarette, and the administration has a reason to believe he or she may be under the influence, they will be sent out for a media drug screen. That hasn't been our practice. Well, let me reframe that. If an administrator believes at any time that a child is under the influence, they are sent out for a screen, of course. But prior to now, if you're caught smoking an e-cigarette, that wasn't the protocol. So, I want to make sure I point out that distinction. This will be outlined in our student handbooks, and we want parents to be aware of that. You know, we're really trying to partner with you all. We've heard you, we've listened to you. You want our help in discouraging your children from smoking electronic cigarettes. This gives us a little bit more teeth, if you will.
Excuse me, I just have a question regarding that one. So, is it they're caught smoking, or they're caught with something in their possession?
That's a good question, and the administrator that has to deal with that scenario has to make that determination.
So, they have flexibility as...okay.
We do.
Okay.
And I think one of the key pieces to that is the appearance of being under the influence now. So, let me be clear. It's not an automatic screening if you're caught smoking an electronic cigarette. There needs to be an indication or at least a presumption that you may be under the influence. Okay? So, Strauss SMA has asked us to be very careful, train our administrators to, you know, look for the signs and symptoms of being under the influence, which we have training for them to do. So, you know, again, it's...this is all about us partnering with our families and trying to discourage this behavior. Look, it's just not good for our kids, and sometimes they make bad decisions. So, stay tuned. Along those same lines, we do have a policy for a passive breath alcohol sensor device. Up to this point, we've not used them, but we do have a policy, and we have adopted it. So, if we were to take steps towards using these PBASD devices at, say, a football game or an extracurricular activity, a school dance, we would certainly notify our families that we were doing this, and this is the policy guide that we would follow. Interesting device, these passive breath alcohol sensors. Students don't actually breathe into the device, it actually captures their exhalant adjacent to them. It's pretty interesting stuff. So, it's a passive device, so as someone's walking by, you literally can detect the presence of alcoholic that... 1613, disclosure and review of applicant's employment history. This is an interesting development. It's really created a lot of work for us. It's an important policy matter. It's the law, and so we're required to do it at Central Office. But essentially, we are required to check an applicant's employment history from the past 20 years. we are required to check an applicant's employment history from the past 20 years. And so when we're notified of someone who's searching for a job in another district that worked for us, we are notified, and we have forms to fill out that I side off on. And basically, it asks us to say yes or no whether or not the employer was reviewed for past child abuse or sexual misconduct. 20 years is a long time. So we've got a lot of people this summer that have been processed through our central office. 5512, HIV. As Mr. Kinney alluded to earlier, there are some subtle and not-so-subtle changes to, to the law. And as, as always, we are kept up to date by Strauss SMA and are compliant with, with these changes. Interestingly, this one's gonna be a challenge for us. The school district's anti-bullying specialist investigating an HIV complaint regarding a school district student attending an approved private school for students with disabilities falls under our jurisdiction. So an out-of-district student at a school for students with disabilities will involve our personnel. So we're waiting for additional guidance from the DOE. They recognize the challenge inherent in that. I mean, these aren't kids that attend our schools from 8 to 3. These are kids that attend a different school. So we're, we're eager to get this additional guidance. Now, why not wait for that? Well, the law goes into effect September 1st. So it's in play. We get that guidance. I'm sure we'll be talking about it again here in this forum. 5561, use of physical restraint. The board committee and I discussed this. Mr. Kinney will tell you that from time to time, for the safety of the child and the children around that child, it has been necessary and will be necessary in the future to use restraint techniques. The board is supportive of that, and we're appreciative. Again, looking for the safest possible way to, to manage all kinds of student behavior. Mechanical restraint falls under that. 2468, independent educational evaluations. For a while now, we've talked about the rising costs of getting an independent educational evaluation. What the board has agreed to do is, with the legwork of Mr. Kinney and his team, we've sought caps on, if you will, on these services. So if a, a family is certainly more than able to seek their own independent education evaluation, but the board, under Regulation 2468, has offered costs for each of those services. 5420, reporting people progress. We've had a number of changes in our student handbooks over the years, since the last time these were updated, back in 2000, 2000. Yes, I said that correctly. The last time we've had a policy and regulation update here was a long time ago. And as you know, our student handbooks, our practices have changed. And so it was necessary for the board committee and I to sit down, having gone through our student handbooks, and update the kinds of things that we're doing today reflected in the regulation. I mean, just as a, for instance, we have trimester reporting in grades 1 through 4. The existing regulation had us reporting out four times a year. So subtle changes like that. Nothing dramatic, but the changes are now accurately reflected in the regulation and policy. 2624, grading system. Likewise, the last time that the board had sat down and examined this policy and regulation was a long time ago. And so some of the things had changed. Our grading scales had changed. The fact that we're using numerics at the high school had changed. There's no more letter grades. So these are the things that were updated in the policy and the reg. Dress code and grooming. You know, going through some of these policies and regs needs to become a more routine practice for us, as I'm sure it will. And so we caught some things that were in our handbooks that weren't in the dress code policy. And so we took our time and we identified what those were. Nothing substantive. You know, what we've been doing, what you're accustomed to doing at home is still in play. There's no, no dramatic changes at all. But rather, we wanted to, the practice to reflect what's in regulation and policy. How'd we do? It's a mouthful, I know.
That's good.
Thank you.
Must've been a heck of a policy meeting. Learned a lot. It was good.
Did you guys have like a sleepover?
Sometimes you gotta get, you gotta get in there.
Yeah.
And stay, apparently.
It was like two hours, three hours?
Couple hours.
It was a couple hours. It was, yeah, it was, it was a lot of time.
Alright, so moving on. Then, under policies, can I have a motion for S29?
So moved.
Second.
And S29 is a motion to approve the first reading of the following policy updates and revisions that Mr. Featherman just reviewed with us. Any discussion? I just want to say thank you to the policy committee for your stamina and for going through all this.
It was a couple hours. It was, it was a couple hours.
We appreciate that, so.
Certainly do from the outside.
Absolutely.
It was presented in a very organized.
It was, it was.
It was actually, so I appreciate that.
It was laid out quite.
For a newbie, to be able to walk in and understand what was happening. It was organized.
Have you ever served on the policy committee? Because you might be the only one sitting at this table that doesn't. I'm just saying. Right.
Just saying, I had other things going on.
Right. Keep that in mind.
Couple other policy meetings or things.
It's good to go to those meetings every once in a while. I'd be on it for a year or so. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara?
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shonar?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S30 and S31?
So moved.
Second.
S30 is a motion to approve the following parent transportation contract for the 18-19 school year. And S31 is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara?
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shonar?
It's I to S30, and I am abstaining from S31.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda.
Easy now.
Seeing none. Alright, announcement of future meetings. Crazy, September 4th, the night before school begins. Because those of us who are parents really have nothing else to do the night before school starts. So this was fantastic.
Yes. Baking cookies sounds good to me.
Yeah, there are lunches to be made, or thankfully, most of those forms are on the portal, so they need to be updated.
They are.
Exactly it, so.
Make sure you sign them.
Absolutely. So September 4th, and then September 18th. Crazy. Same time, same place?
Same.
Same everything. I hope everybody had a...
Whole different show, though.
A great summer, and enjoy your last two weeks, two weeks and a couple hours.
No, there's still two weeks.
Nice. Nice. She's hanging on.
Keep on saying that. It's over.
Everyone out there who knows me knows. I'm hanging on.
Can I have a motion to adjourn and to return to executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara?
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shonar?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.